Good morning, let us pray.
Good morning.
Gracious Father, we come now in Jesus' name. We thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for life, health, and for strength. We ask, God, that you bless the city of Mobile. Continue to bless the efforts and the progress of the City Council. Bless the mayor and bless all who stand in need of prayer, Lord, and continue to make decisions that they will be for our good and for your glory. Continue to give all of us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and increase our patience as our leaders lead us into higher heights and deeper depths for the city of Mobile. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna ask, before we sit down, that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of Ms. Anissa Baker, who tragically, as life was taken at the grand hall shooting not too long ago. She'll be funeralized today at 11:00. And we want her family, her friends, her classmates at McGill Tulane to know that she certainly is in our thoughts, our prayers, and they have our deepest sympathies and condolences. Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
He's here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Glad to have all of you here in attendance. Our rules are quite simple. We ask that you would silence all of your electronic communication modalities. We ask also that there be no unreasonable public outcry in or disturbances. If you're coming to address the council, we ask that you give your name and your address for the record. You'll be given five minutes by which to offer any commentary you want to share with the council. At the ringing of the first bell, that's indicated that four minutes have elapsed. You have one minute to conclude and summarize your remarks. Then we ask that you would expeditionally move to your seat. We ask that you not reference any one particular council member. That all remarks, questions be made to the chair, and the members of the council and our administration will have the opportunity, if needed, to respond to any of your concerns. If you'd like to address the council on an issue that is pertinent to today's agenda, we ask that you call the council, the City Clerk's office, rather, on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday that you'd like to speak so that they can add you to the agenda. Those are our rules. We look forward to a smooth meeting. We're back in the hands of our City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of April 10th. Still move?
Second.
Probably move to second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. How's everybody today?
Good morning.
Excellent. I have a proclamation I would like to read this morning, and it has to do with a service dog named Delta. And Tara Reeves, I believe, is gonna bring Delta down.
Zora has Gary.
Zora.
Zora. Zora. Sorry about that, Zora.
You're fine.
So, I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'll let you explain to everybody how you have Delta with you, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas Delta, Delta the dog, is dedicated to helping a child or an adult with disabilities once her training has been complete. And whereas Delta is learning the commands, "Sit," "Stay," "Come," and more. And whereas Delta is looking so fresh in her new haircut, she deserves all the treats. And whereas Delta, who's a good girl, therefore I, William S. Simpson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby recognize Delta Day in the City of Mobile.
Yeah, Delta.
So, let's give Delta a big round of applause. Now, obviously, there is another story, and that needs to be told. So, Zor, can you tell what actually will happen with Delta going forward and where she's headed?
Yes, definitely. So, Delta, she's gonna be with us at NBC 15 News for about two years. We've been working with her for a few months. Good dog. We've worked with her for a few weeks since we're trying to get her trained so that she can go to someone who has public safety, a veteran, someone with special needs. And so, we're trying to get a veteran dog to public safety. And at the end of the two years, hopefully, she is 100% trained, and then they will decide if she is ready to be a service dog. If she's still a puppy, that's pretty big. Delta, sit. Good dog. You definitely have stitches. Stay. You lay. Good dog.
Look at that.
So, she is wearing her little t-shirt.
Zora, there are a lot of us with children and grandchildren that would love to see if y'all could do as good a job with them as y'all are doing with Delta. I noticed sitting out in the lobby before coming in that Delta is rewarded with treats every time she obeys a command. But, you know, the mission of these service dogs really cannot be understated because whether they're a comfort dog or rescue dog, I mean, from the standpoint of finding people that are in need of being found, whether it's in a natural disaster or some kind of catastrophic event, they're playing a valuable part. And having the community help in that training, I mean, I feel like Mobile is very fortunate, and NBC is certainly fortunate to have the opportunity to work with that training. So, thank y'all for what you're doing. Appreciate it. Certainly. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to kayak down Perch Creek Nature Trail. Yesterday, we unveiled new signage, educational signage, which has trail maps for kayakers. Perch Creek is one of the newest additions to the birding, the coastal birding trail. And it's all come about through a National Fish and Wildlife Federation grant. We happen to be with these grants restoring three waterways, one of which is Perch Creek. Also, it just reminds you that last month, when the, yeah, it was last month when the Restore Council voted of how to distribute some of the proceeds from the BP oil money, 3.5 million was given to malls in the form of a grant. And part of that grant will be to raise the Perch Creek Bridge that's over Dolphin, on Dolphin Island Parkway. But not only will it raise another bridge where kayakers can go on it, but it also, and more importantly, will help our sewage overflowes in that area. So, I was very interested in making that kayaking trip yesterday morning. Tomorrow's National Walk at Lunch Day. From 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the first 75, and it's gonna be in front of Government Plaza. The first 75 participants will receive a free lunch. The first 50 participants will have a free cholesterol check. And there will be other health and fitness checks will also be provided. And you can also check, walk at other local shelters. But anyway, this is where it's gonna start, here tomorrow. So, thank you very much, and glad to see everybody here today.
New committee assignments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. As we discussed both in last week and this week's meeting, we'll probably be giving some consideration to committees. The first one that we want to have a look at and make an appointment in is the, a new committee relative to the CIP process. And we're gonna ask that Councilman CJ Small would chair this committee, and the Councilman John Williams and Councilman Fred Richardson would serve as committee members with him. This is, this is an increased effort for the council and the administration to work even more collaboratively on this very important capital improvement program process. So, we're gonna assign that particular committee. And Task Councilman Small will work with those appointed committee members to set up a meeting, work with Ms. Erby, so that we can become even more engaged as we move forward with this CIP process.
Councilman Manzi.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible that, I don't believe we have any other meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at 1:00 p.m., if that's okay with the other members?
We have an executive session.
Yes, the executive, okay.
That will be called for next Tuesday concerning some litigation.
At what time? Right after council meeting?
Right after council meeting, and it'll probably take a couple hours, maybe.
Okay, we'll just get back to it.
Okay. Well, just get with your committee members and let us know, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I would, although I'm not a member of that committee, I would like to attend it. And I'd like to respectfully remind everybody that I won't be here on the first. So, if that meeting could be, when it is scheduled, not scheduled on the first, I appreciate it.
I will give it to the other members, and we'll schedule it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
The proper motion and second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of noise ordinance on May 12th on Ashwood Drive and May 26th and 28th on Burtonwood Drive.
Still move?
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Timothy Hollis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Timothy Hollis, 1924 Seal Street, Mobile, Alabama. Today, I come to address you all about the delay in the selection of a council president. As you all already know, it was discussed at the pre-council meeting this morning. It's been about six months since this council has taken their seats, and there still is no resolve with our vacancy of a council president. As we all know, that a council president is important, and is required to be voted in. We are supposed to have a president and a vice president. Anybody of structure only works with the two. We don't have just a vice president in Washington, D.C., running business. No disrespect to the council person holding that chair right now. We have a president and a vice president. So, on a level where a president and a vice president is important, I believe that we should move expeditiously to make that happen. This is one of the most influential chairs in our local government. Next to being a mayor, or a chief of staff, or just a council person in general, it is most people's dream to obtain a chair of that magnitude. What images and standards are we providing for rival cities? Our up-and-coming youth, and anyone interested in taking part in this democratic process with hopes and dreams and ambitions of one day serving on the City Council? As I stand here today, I am before the same exact council that served our community in the previous term before this one. This is the same council that would brag about being able to work through their issues, get to the bottom of tough decisions, and even claim to be a model council for other cities around the nation. With that being said, this exact same council, there is not one new face in the seven chairs that preside over our city. As a taxpayer, and a voting citizen, and community leader, it is within my opinion that I believe that we should act with a sense of urgency and move expeditiously towards naming a president. I did not come to voice my opinion for any particular being to be placed in the chair, but to simply state that someone needs to be in the chair. We are embarrassing ourselves as a city. This does not look like one Mobile. So, please, City Council, do us all a favor and walk it like you talk it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis.
Ron Green.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Ron Green. I live at 2255 Hatchcock Street, Mobile. Actually, I just moved back here two years ago, after being gone 27 years. And I'm excited today because we are here representing the Gulf Coast Entertainment Business Conference. We're holding our conference at the Battle House Hotel. Of course, we chose that location because of the downtown entertainment district. Just to give you some, I've already given you guys a brief synopsis of what our event will be. We do have a full proposal, and we would like anyone that would like to receive that to contact us. Just to give you a little bit about the event. The Gulf Coast Entertainment Business Conference is all about the business of entertainment. And I always tell people, before the Super Bowl, before they kick the first kickoff, that's a year-long process of business that has to be done. That's only one entertainer on stage, but there are thousands of positions behind. So, we chose the Entertainment Business Conference to educate the Gulf Coast. We're targeting the Gulf Coast, which is Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi, Texas, and Louisiana. We have a weekend, a planned weekend of three days of events. Very excited about. I also have the founder, Mr. Taylor, who will come up and give you more information about what we're doing. And then, if we have time, I'd like to come back and close.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Latasha Taylor. I'm the president and founder of On Point Entertainment. I'm sorry, I reside at 8486 Placid Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. This vision, I am not from Mobile. I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana. I had the pleasure of doing a corporate relocation to Mobile in 2012, where I brought over 1,500 jobs to the aviation industry over at Brookly Complex. But my heart, passion, and soul is in the music and entertainment business, which I have been vital in and instrumental in for the last 20 years. And I see Mobile as a prime location for this type of event. Everyone that is coming into Mobile has over 20 years in the music, film, fashion, and sports industry, and they want to utilize the Gulf Coast as a new infrastructure. And since we're centralized to all of those states that Mr. Green had mentioned, I wanted to make sure that we give them, we roll out the red carpet for this type of event, and we host this event as a city. So, I'm hopeful that you guys will see the value in what this can bring to the city of Mobile, not just first year, but years to come. And I thank you in advance for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And one thing in closing, coming home, I came home with 30 years' experience in the entertainment industry. I've done everything from concert, plays, movies. And I've done a lot of events. One of my events that was in Atlanta brought a million people to the city, and also $2 billion to the economy. And I could tell you, I had never been excited about doing something in my own hometown. So, we're asking that you guys do support us. And if you'd like to know how to support us, is first of all, all we need is endorsement letters. We need you guys to get the proposal, take a look at it, and get with us. Because if other cities begin to see that you guys are endorsing an event, then we will have a lot of support from other cities. One of the major things is, one of our other partners is Hype Magazine. Hype Magazine has 3 million followers, and so, and they, they'll have a national exposure. So, the goal is also just to spotlight Mobile. We were very instrumental in bringing the entertainment industry to Atlanta, and I know that we can do the same thing here. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Ms. Dale.
Ordinance is held over 34008. Levy taxes for tax year beginning October 1, 2018, on all real and personal property and intangibles within the corporate limits of the City of Mobile.
Still move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions held over 37249. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offering is only licensed from Riverside Market.
Hold off one additional, one additional week.
Second. Proper motion and second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is held on.
Resolutions held over 01246. Authorized agreement with ADFS for right-of-way mowing services for Airport Boulevard, Michigan Avenue, Dolphin and Dolphin Street. And 01247. Authorized agreement with Eric's Lawn Care for right-of-way ditch mowing services in Trinity Gardens.
Still move?
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 31257 through 6265.
Motion for suspension of rules for immediate separation of, rest with 315257 through 6265, with the exception of 31258, that will live for one week.
Second.
And 259. Well, those are moved, I'm sorry. Those have been moved.
Yeah.
Those gotta be.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31257. Authorized grant agreement for financial assistance in amount of $25,000 from the National Basketball Players Association Foundation. 37260. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a non-profit tax exempt license for Heidi Horst Derby Cathedral Square. 37261. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for Esteco Cinco de Mayo on Highway 90 West. 37262. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for San Miguel, Cinco de Mayo. 37263. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for San Miguel, Cinco de Mayo, and Theodore. 6264. Approve award a special bonus to the Officer of the Month as part of the Mayor's incentive program, Andrew Anderson. 60265. Determine expenditure of discretionary funds for contribution to the Mobile City Women Federation and Youth Clubs serves a public purpose and approved payment.
Still move? Proper, is it second?
Second.
Proper move to second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21266 through 21271.
Motion for suspension of rules for immediate consideration of resolution 21266 through 21271.
Second. Proper motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
212, if there's no objection to any of these, I'll take them all together since we are pressed for time.
Yes, ma'am.
21266. Authorized contract with huge plumbing and utility contractors for 2017 miscellaneous drainage repairs. 21267. Authorized contract with McCrory and Williams for 2017 miscellaneous drainage repairs. 21268. Authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for 2018 bridge replacement study, Demetropoulos Road over Halls Mill Creek. 21269. Authorized contract with Hutchinson Moore Rouse for Copeland Cox Tennis Center Sloped Retaining Wall Repair Courts. 21270. Authorized contract with Dell Consulting for City of Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal HVAC replacement. 21271. Authorized contract with Dell Consulting for West Regional Library HVAC and Generator.
I believe you read out 21266. We can live for one week.
Oh, we're, okay, we're late, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, that's 21267 through 212721.
Still move?
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01272 through 21277.
Set revolution for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings, 41278. Call for public hearing to rezone property at the south side of Cooman Road, 375 feet east of U.S. Highway 90 West from R1 and B1 to allow the construction of a retirement facility to be scheduled May 15.
Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
We'll start with Councilman Davis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I would like to announce that this evening, 6:00 p.m. at Westminster Presbyterian Church, which is at the corner of Airport Boulevard and Sage Avenue in District 5, the Police Citizens Advisory Committee will be meeting. That meeting is open to all citizens of the city. And I urge everyone who has an interest in this matter and the conduct of our police department to attend that meeting. Again, 6:00 p.m., Westminster Presbyterian Church, corner of Airport Boulevard and Sage Avenue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We're certainly glad to have back with us our honored colleague, Councilmember Gina Gregory. Wanted to know she's in both our thoughts and our prayers. And at this time, you could have your announcements. Glad to have you back.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate that. Couple of announcements in the district. The ROTC unit over at the University of South Alabama will be busy this weekend in Langen Park. They are painting the airplane that sits at the park. If you've been out there recently, you know that the train has been painted recently. So, now, students from South Alabama will be participating on Saturday to paint the airplane out there to really spruce it up and make it look a lot better. So, looking forward to that. This has been spearheaded by the young lady who visited with us about six months ago, Savannah Long. She wanted to do something in the community, thought this would be a great project, and so, she spearheaded it with the ROTC folks at South. And so, I look forward to seeing all them out there on Saturday. Also, coming up on April 27th, which is a week from this Saturday, the annual Sidewalk-a-thon is coming up in the Village of Spring Hill. Children are out still raising money now, as you know. The money that the kids raise goes to help match TAP grants that we use in the community. The Sidewalk-a-thon begins at 4:00. We'll be gathering next door to the Moore Library, on that big green space next door to the library. So, anyone interested, please come on out, put on your walking shoes, and join us for a really terrific event, and help us raise money for more sidewalks in the community. And, Mr. Vice President, if I may, you did mention happy to have me back, while I have been assisted in making my way back today by my lovely sister, who I know is embarrassed that I am introducing her, Lori. This is my sister, Lori Green. Please stand up. She comes to us via Canada, the great white north. And she was very happy to be here with us because, as you may know, it's blizzard conditions where she's from. So, she's getting to wear flip-flops and shorts while she is here with us.
Yay. Thank you again, Councilwoman Gregory. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President. This past Sunday, I had the privilege to celebrate two milestone celebrations in District 3. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Fred Reed. Many of y'all know their daughter, Yvonne Matthews, well educator, well-known educator here in the city of Mobile. They celebrated their 75th wedding anniversary this past Sunday. And it was a great celebration to celebrate with them. And also, congratulations to Ms. Mary Farr. She celebrated her 100th birthday in District 3 on this past Sunday. So, this past Sunday was a great of celebrations within the district. Also, on this coming Saturday, April 21st, at 10:00 a.m., there will be art and paddle peninsula style. This will take place at the Matinelli Park at 4830 Park Road, which is located off of Dolphin Island Parkway. This year, event is combined with the Dog River Clearwater Revival, also with the annual Grape Drift. There will be plenty of music, songwriting, poetry, different varieties of forms of art. Also, the South Brookly United Methodist Church will be selling connected sausage. This will benefit different community plans within the peninsula, the DIP area, especially for the master plan for the redevelopment of the city Mobile-only coastal community. This is a family-friendly event inviting all the citizens throughout Mobile and surrounding areas to please come out this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Matinelli Park for art and paddle peninsula style. This will be a great event, and Old Dutch Ice Cream, we'll be having some ice cream on hand. on hand. Monday, April the twenty-third, I would like to call for the CIP committee to convene at ten o'clock AM on the night floor. I will chair the meeting along with Councilman John Williams and Councilman Frederick Richardson. Again, this meeting will be at ten AM. I am requesting that we have a representative from the Finest Department and also a representative from Mrs. Diane Irving, Department for CIP. Again, this coming Monday, April the twenty-third, at ten o'clock AM on the night floor. Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. Man, are we getting some good weather out there. It is amazing what a day we had yesterday. It's why we live in Mobile, Alabama. And the good, the good weather always reminds me that baseball season is well in swing for the youth and is getting in swing for the professionals. Our Mobile Bay Bears have played ten games. They are on the, tonight will be the second game of a ten-game home stand, where they'll be playing Biloxi for half of that and Mississippi for the other half. And everybody's always telling me, there's nothing to do in Mobile. And say what you may, absolute quality venue at the most affordable price that you could hope for. The most expensive ticket is field level for eight dollars a person. And on Tuesdays, you get two people for eight dollars. In all this beautiful weather, there's no reason why we don't take advantage of one of the most family-friendly venues in our city and give our youth an opportunity to aspire to be one of the few, one of those that get to be professional baseball players. It's a really neat time. In fact, on Sunday afternoons, from the time the gate opens till start of the game time, the children can go out onto the field with parents or with friends and play pitch and catch. And what a great opportunity. So, I encourage us to, to take advantage of this venue and go out and enjoy America's great pastime. Thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the members of the All Volunteer Mobile Pops Band that was out at Medal of Honor Park in the Pavilion yesterday at seven PM. They came out. They were originally scheduled to be out there on Saturday, but they regrouped and gave a really great Disney music concert. And I thank them for their excitement and the entertainment that they bring to our community. Also, on Saturday, April twenty-eighth, there'll be a group out at Medal of Honor Park. I got wind of this from Dan Otto, and this is a group that's going to do some painting and tightening up of signs inside the park. And they have done it in other, I believe, at Langen Park. It's called the Veterans Recovery Resources. And they'll be out there in the morning until they get done, I think, or however long the paint lasts. But I'm real impressed with this group and happy to support them, and they have about fifty volunteers that they are expecting. So, again, I'd like to thank them for coming forward to offer their volunteerism. And they'll be out there on Saturday, April twenty-eighth, in the morning at Medal of Honor. So, if you see someone out there painting, give them a great big thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich. Miss, Councilman Richardson?
Yes, thank you very much. Excuse me. I'd like to announce that today at two PM, a special ad hoc committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We will be meeting with representatives from the utility industry regarding vacant utility poles in the city's right-of-way that are now causing wholesale blight throughout our city. It's, it's no power connected to them. They're just sitting out there as blight, and our goal is to have the utility industry to remove those poles. We have met with them twice, and hopefully, what we're trying to do, we're trying not to pass an ordinance requiring them to move the poles, we're hoping that they will police themselves. We'll know more about that at two o'clock, but if they cannot police themselves, we will become the police officers to get those poles out of the right-of-way. I want to say something about our CIP fund. I think it's widely known that this, each council district receives twenty-three million dollars a year to be spent on capital projects in that district. I think what is confusing is that many citizens believe that throughout the year, we have the three million dollars, and they can call us and say, I want my street resurfaced, I want more lights, I want this, I want that, and then we go to the three million dollars and get the money, go out there and do it. No, that's not how it's doing. The entire three million dollars is programmed into the twenty-nineteen budget, and last year, it was programmed in the twenty-eighteen budget, all of it. Not one dime left for us to do anything. Once we pass the budget, it's over. We would have identified the projects that we want them to work on, and that money is in the budget for those projects. So, what, in District One, what I did. I made a letter to every resident, every residence in District One, and I told them, I have three billion dollars for the entire district. Please tell me and identify the projects that you would like for me to work on. I would like to have the most important five projects that you want me to work on in your district. I didn't get a great response in any of the five major communities. I didn't get much of a response. But let me say, those people who did respond, that's, I'm going to be working on what they say they want me to work on. And those people failed to respond, I took that to mean it didn't matter. Whatever you worked on is just fine with me. I don't have nothing to say. You could, you could have phoned me, text me, emailed me, you could have written me a letter, you could have come to a community meeting, it's all kind of ways that you could have contacted me. But for twenty-nineteen, I have already submitted to the administration the projects that I want worked on, and those projects will be approved in the twenty-nineteen budget, and then we'll start on twenty-twenty. I'll send the same letter out. If fifty people respond, I'm going to do what those fifty people say. If five thousand people respond, I'm going to prioritize, and I'm going to get the most important, I'm start working on the most important five projects that they identified in the, in the various communities. I don't think it can get any better than for me to write you and for you to tell me what it is you want me to do. You know why I do that? Because people say, you know Fred Richardson's not done anything. And my question is, what did you ask me to do that I didn't do? If the answer is nothing, you've got your answer. I couldn't do what you want me to do because you didn't let me know what it is you want me to do. If you tell me, I'll get to work on it. The tennis court for Figures Park is under construction as we speak, and we expect the basketball court to be under, we voted today to put the last leg of that project into the budget, twenty-five thousand dollars, and with that, it would be enough money with the two fifty, we are, twenty-five thousand we already have, that's going to be enough to complete this new modern court at Figures Park. So, with us approving the twenty-five thousand today, we expect very soon construction to start on this new modern basketball court, any, unlike any you would see anywhere in the area. At two PM, a special ad hoc committee will be in session in the council conference room. Oh, I mentioned that, that, yeah, I've already mentioned that one. I want to say, I want to say that something about Publix, I have not had a chance to mention Publix since they opened up. I had to leave, on the day that we cut the ribbon, I was at the ribbon cutting, but I had to leave the ribbon cutting, heading to Chicago to bear my sister. And from there, I had to head to Neptah Bear Cousins, so I haven't had the opportunity to really say anything about Publix. And I would like to commend, and I said this at the grand opening, every council member, the mayor, every department that assisted in bringing this great project to fruition. It's a great project for District One, it's a great project for Midtown, it's a great project for all of the communities east of sixty-five. It was built in a food desert. Yesterday, I met with Kobe Holmes, the manager, to see how things, things were going, and he told me that they are very pleased at the support that they have received in this new store, that they are beyond what they had projected, they're getting new customers every day. And what was more threatening to him is that the people in the immediate vicinity were up there every day shopping in that store. So, we, I just, I think it's great. I go by there just about every day to see what's going on. There will be three restaurants, the restaurants up there, and they're going to have two clothing stores, one for children, one for men. G-Hovel is already open, and there will be other venues coming. It's the only village of this type that we have in the area. It's no, it's no one store connected to another store. Each one is self-standing, which means that that is a village-type concept, and I think that it's all that I have. You could go from there, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, I want to start my announcements by publicly and formally welcoming Pastor Jessica Dur of the Metropolitan AMU Church, a prominent church in our district and in our city. We appreciate you coming today for the invocation, and as I mentioned prior to our meeting, however I can be helpful, I'm only a phone call away. We've not had any community meetings in District Two for the last four months as I recuperate from knee injury, knee surgery, but as I say every week, I'm only an email, Facebook message, text, or phone call away. My number is five zero nine four two three nine. I'm not running from the citizens of District Two, I'm working for you in District Two. So, however I can be helpful, we don't have to have a community meeting for me to begin the process of engaging the administration in order to solve or remedy any issue you might have in the community. I want to thank the members of the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Phi. I was presented with an honor and an award by this very prestigious organization on Friday evening at the Marriott Hotel, and I certainly want to thank their national president and their local ambassadors and all members of that National Sorority of Educators for that award. That concludes my announcements. Any further commentary from the council?
Yes, Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I've been asked to reschedule the CIP meeting from Monday, the twenty-third of April to April the twenty-sixth, which is Thursday after next, at ten o'clock AM on the night floor. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any further, Mrs. Gregory, Mrs. Rich, any further announcements? Mr. Wilson, any announcements? Nothing further. Thank, thank you again. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for, for reminding us of that. Do I hear a motion? Is there a second? Proper motion and second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjournment.